Okay, I'd like to call the February 2018 work session of the Board of Education to order. Before I go to the first item, I'd just like to introduce a few of the people that asked to come here this afternoon. And they represent the JPNAF SAD group, Students Against Destructive Decisions. The two advisors, Lauren Woods and Denise Crowder, and two of the students, Piper Antons and Alicia Wilson. And we heard a presentation that they had made during a luncheon. At which, you know, they're so active, they were able to get the CEO of the national SAD organization to come to that luncheon and make a presentation. But during their presentation, at which Ms. Rose and Mr. Crowder were also there, they had mentioned the topic of bullying in there. And so that issue came up at the board meeting, and I thought we could have them here and possibly include them in any future activities we have to deal with bullying. And during our discussion of that, I think you've already started some efforts along the way to deal with that issue. So the first item on the work session agenda is the review of policy 7110, 4021, 7230, the prohibition against discrimination, harassment, and bullying. And I think I'd like to turn that over right now to Ms. Rose, because she's the one who requested to have this on the agenda.
Well, I've just had three or four parents contact me about their child being bullied. One pretty severely, really severely, so much so that she withdrew from her school system. We hear all the time from our administrators that the kids have to tell us that they're being bullied before we address the issue. And I agree, we can't fix something we don't know about. However, most of the time, the kids aren't ready to do that. So I think we need to be proactive with this. Now, we talked about last time that our sheriff's department has a program that they would go with if they're in the schools. Did we do that, Mr. Stefani? Did they go? Do you know if that was set up?
No, actually, I was waiting for this conversation to see if there were other options out there. And as Dr. Dodman just said, SAD has some opportunities to do some training as well.
I also had a community member whose children graduated from their schools and they're long gone, have children of their own. He sent me a message this week asking that we look into Rachel's Challenge, which we've had here before. I know that, but we don't have that every year, do we?
Is there any?
Yeah, we don't. Some of the schools have the four club, which is Friends of Rachel. And that's an ongoing club where the kids do activities and sponsor different events and things like that. But Trillium sponsored that for us, so the cost of that didn't come from us to have that initial presentation come.
I remember after that happened, that Rachel's Challenge went to the high school or middle school. I'm not even sure where my daughter saw it. But she did come home, and it really impacted her. And I heard other friends of hers talking about it. I've not heard it mentioned since. I would like for us to look into maybe having that more frequently than just every two or three years.
Well, once you have a presentation from Rachel's Challenge, you can give follow-up programming with that.
I also want us to, you know, look at, of course, it's a serious thing. And, you know, I'm not sure what, if we're punishing those that are doing bullying or not.
One of the things that I'd try to check into, I don't know what type of effort we have countywide and what different grade levels, you know, trying to concentrate on the lack of, we're battling bullying. I think we need to have it inserted out of countywide.
I agree.
And what I'd like to do is form a committee. And I would like Virginia Arrington, who's in charge of administrative services, to be the chair of this committee. I would like on this committee, one counselor from each level, elementary, middle, and high school.
What do you mean, counselor? Oh, okay. School, okay.
One parent from each level, elementary, middle, and high school. One student school board member from each high school. One SAD advisor, and one SAD student. And that, I think, would be a total committee of 11. And I would like the committee to, one, determine how anti-bullying efforts have been presented, at what grade levels, how often, what was presented, how was it presented, and how effective were those efforts? And then, second, I would like this committee to determine what they would consider and recommend for each of the areas that I just listed. How often should something on anti-bullying be presented? What should be presented? I haven't set any timelines. Virginia, if you could just contact or get this group together, you know, try to find a parent from each grade level, counselor from each grade level. I think you're, since you're the administrative coordinator, you oversee the counselors, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And we'll see if we can get a countywide that's sort of out to deal with bullying. And to help you out right now, just turn it back over to Lauren Beatrice. You've already looked at some things to do, right? Can you just mention a few of those?
Well, first off, I think the policy. When you go to each of the middle schools, you go to the, each of the high schools, including the Currituck Learning Center, you read the anti-bullying policy of each of those, and it is vastly different. Though, it should be referred back to board policy 1710, which I pulled all and every policy number that had anything having to do with bullying or harassment. Moyac Middle has one paragraph, and I'm going to actually pull that up here, that says bullying, harassment, this is first offense, this is what happens, second offense, so on and so forth. It's the only listing about bullying in that particular handbook. And this is specifically for the different schools. I think if there was a more concise policy that is written specifically for the middle schools, specifically for the high schools, that is not undermined by each other. So, for another instance, Currituck Middle, on page four, bullying and harassment, maintain learning, and it kind of gives you a quick little brief of what bullying and harassment is, doesn't list any consequences. I think we're kind of a consequence-driven student body. They don't see a consequence, they don't know the consequence. And that's why I kind of prefer to look at Moyac Middle. Going to Currituck County Learning Center, they are very explicit. This is the policy, this is what bullying and harassment is. You can refer to that specific policy and it's a link. Currituck County High School talks a lot about improper use of school technology and cyberbullying. It briefly mentions the anonymous reporting that is available to Currituck County students. Nobody else mentions even that in their handbook. And I think that's important for our students to read. JPNAF, we have rule number nine. And obviously, we also say that cyberbullying is prohibited. Basically, the big roundabout on that is, we need to find a policy that we can go, okay, this is the middle school policy, this is what your consequences are. And then, when you get to the high school, this is what the bullying is here, these are your consequences. So I think if there's more of a tangible...
More consistency?
Yeah, more consistency, thank you, between the two. I think that's step one. So if we start seeing that in our handbooks, I think you'll start getting a little bit better of a response.
I think you see it in elementary also.
Right. I didn't go that far back. I stopped at middle school because at that point I had paper everywhere. But I just feel that the students would go, okay, well, this was a policy in middle school, this is the policy at high school. There's not much of a difference. And consequence is a big thing. I strongly believe that consequence is where the students will go, well, wait a minute, this may be a bad thing, and I don't really want to get five days out of school suspension just because I went online and said something about somebody.
And more than having them be part of it, that, okay, so there's that consistency, but there's also a specific set of time that, you know, if you bring the, for Rachel and things like that, but the specific time where they are made specifically aware as a student body as a whole. So, not just to assume that the parents are going to read the handbook, the kids are obviously not going to read the handbook, but that they are consistently being, you know, once or twice a year reminded of, this is what it looks like, these are what the consequences are. But, you know, that looking at it from, you know, that consequence-based, you know, lens, also looking at it, as we discussed, you know, during the luncheon too, you know, when the kids, you know, start to try and build those other SAD chapters to give a positive reinforcement to positive decision-making, which leaves them away from bullying at all anyway. So sort of encouraging those positive friendships, positive relationships across the board. And, you know, having kids like this, you know, be part of that and mentoring those younger kids, you know, is that flip side that we get talked about. So, you know, on this one side where we need to have that sort of consistency, and then have the informative piece, even, you know, grammar school and middle school. And this is, you know, middle school, my 14-year-old, I don't know if I'm going to make it. But, you know, middle school, maybe three times a year. But, you know, the idea is that...
I think if we put emphasis on it all the way around, whether it be coaches, teachers, beginning-of-the-year-assembly, PTA meetings.
Yeah, it just can't be on the handbook.
Yes, it has got to be talked about by everybody. But we are not going to tolerate this. And I'm also concerned about it taking place, you know, the consequences it has, just like you're talking about the cyberbullying. You know, I know that we have repercussions for athletes who do things that they're not supposed to do on weekends, and we punish them. But yet, I don't think we have anything in place where we punish children who do something to others, like the cyberbullying. I think it really, we need to put some meat into what we're doing with this.
There's more...
Hopefully, this is what the committee is going to come up with, you know, a plan of how we're going to address this issue. And address it more effectively, obviously, than what we have done. One thing, I went on the internet and found, it's called "cyberbullying and pure abuse publications for parents." And here's some actual handbooks for parents that the committee may, you know, consider in a deforming parents. And there's also a government website, National, it's called stopbullying.gov, that, you know, you can tie into.
I told a young man who, and I didn't talk to him until he was in 10th grade, but he said, every day in middle school, he was bullied by this one child. And he didn't tell anybody until the very end, and when he did, it was stopped. But, you know, that concerns me.
I agree with both the idea of not only SAD members, but anyone that we would trust to help mentor the younger kids, particularly in elementary through middle school, because unfortunately, by the time you get to high school, you're going to be kind of set in ways that you can't change. But I would like to get them early. I would also, I really would like to have a consistent policy at whatever grade level we're talking about. And I like it, I really am thankful that you took the time to look into that and tell us that there's no clarity, there's no consistency. I have a little problem with that. And I'd also go so far as to say that I would be, you know, happy to see, maybe while we're explaining this during the course of the year, that maybe we could get them to sign an oath, that, hey, I'm not going to bully. And if I see bullying, so that that child isn't going to be having to deal with it for however many years, that they sign an oath that they're going to let somebody know about it, and it's not telling, it's saying.
I think Rachel's Challenge had, they signed...
They did, they signed pledges.
They signed pledges, yeah.
When was that, that we last had?
It's been like three years since I did it.
It's my second year in high school, I think, Sylvia.
What does, what is, you mentioned that they can come back and do a follow-up, what?
So that's something we need to do.
I mean, if that's something we need to go out to the community and solicit businesses to support it, we'll do it.
This is always something that the committee can pursue and stuff, because it's all going to be part of the same effort.
I didn't get to the luncheon, but I got to the meeting afterwards, and I thought that District Attorney Wobble and the other speakers, of course, I thought the SAD guy was 12, but... But they did an excellent job. And so I think we need to use those resources too. Wobble kind of put it on the line that, you know, it's going to go with you forever, so if you do it.
Yeah, the other speakers that were at that were Mobile Crisis Service Supervisor Keith Hamm, Currituck County Sheriff Deputy Nathan Large, County District Attorney Andrew Wobble, and then, of course, the CEO, Rick Bird.
I think the committee that you're forming is a great idea, and I think, you know, a great first step.
I would agree with that, and I'd also like them to understand, not that they're with you, but that if they were to put something out on the internet, capturing any of these type of activities that happen to the last forever. And as to punishment, it's not just what you say, you punish someone one time or 10 times. That's the unfortunate side of the era that we live in. And I just would hope that they express to the kids that they're mentoring that that could be the points that you keep throwing forever, or whatever, you know, the words that last forever, which is very sad.
Okay, I do, Alicia, stand up for just a minute. It's too bad everybody didn't get the chance to hear these two girls make their presentation at that SAD luncheon. We ask them if they would be willing to go to the middle schools and help implement a counterbullying policy. They both seem more than welcome, they're welcome the idea of doing that. This is probably as quiet as I've ever heard pipers.
Great job.
They did a great job.
We appreciate it.
And we look forward to your input on the committee too. And one thing that I would like, and the reason I would like them to help present at the middle school, I really think that students are more likely to react when their peers say something than if it's an adult preaching it. So, and that's why I'm glad that, you know, you offered your services in that. Thank you once again. I guess I'll close by saying, I'm happy you girls are sad. Anything else on bullying? And if you could keep us abreast of what's happening, you know, as far as your committee knows, appreciate it. Maybe in, maybe next month or the month after, we'll have you do a presentation, you know, to the board about what's happening so far in that community. Okay, the next item, Engage New York Math. And before I ask for the presentation on that, I would just like to make a statement that, you know, we need to educate Currituck students for their futures and not our past. This should be paramount to our goals and decisions as a board of education. To do anything less would be a disservice to our students. We need to be able to compete with the best students in North Carolina and the nation. Therefore, anytime we make a decision, we need to make sure it provides for our students' futures and does not force them to back into the slide-rule-and-seespot-run mentality of education. Again, we need to educate Currituck students for their futures and not our past. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lutz, who will give us a presentation on the Engage New York Math.
Thank you. Because I forgot to have them do it.
We can share, so they can see. Their eyes are younger than ours.
I was going to say...
Okay, all right. I was going to give a brief history on the actual, how we got to New York Math. So, it was piloted in 1516, school year. And at that time, Sandy Kensel shared this handout. Well, not at the time it was piloted, but after the pilot was completed. She handed this handout, and he goes over, takes a look at... So it was piloted in 1516 in a number of buildings by around 10 teachers. We took that data, and that data said that teachers were doing well. So if you look at the sheet, which says pilot teacher rates, that's on your handout, 82%, 72%, and so on. So based on the pilot year, the decision was made to implement New York Math across the district. And it was done with support with pacing guides that were created by staff and teachers who had worked with the Engage New York curriculum. So, lessons were developed, and they're available online. And what I wanted, this is what, this is a fifth grade, this is Angela Ferris developed it. She's our Assistant Principal of Moyoc. And it's a 12-page handout, but this is only three. And what I want you to take a look at, the first two pages outline what a good pacing guide would look like, and what you, how you make decisions for kids. What I'd like to do is take a look at the very back page. So, Engage New York Math is a program. And there are many programs that are used across the state to deliver curriculum to students. In Currituck County, we decided in 2016, 2017 to use Engage New York Math as our basis. When you align your curriculum with the state standards, you don't take a single program and follow it verbatim, lockstep. And so, the reason I gave you that handout is on that last page there, you will see that the one, it says omit lesson two, grade four standard. So this is a fifth grade lesson, I did that when I colored. So again, it says omit, and it says it is recommended not to omit any of these, omit this. So Angela had gone through this and really took the state standards, she took the Engage New York Math curriculum, and she aligned it with what we should be teaching. She didn't just take that Engage New York curriculum and walk straight through. And when she did that, she saw a huge bump in her student performance. So this serves as our anchor curriculum. It is not the old, it is not, however, where you, like, when we went to school, when I went to school, we started on page four, we went to the end, we did all of the problems at the end of the chapter, whether, all of them, right? We didn't just do every, if we were lucky, we got the every other one, okay? But unfortunately, most of the time, we had to do them all, and I didn't do them all. So, this serves as our anchor. And so you go through it, and it's paced, 14 days here, 30 days here, and it's aligned to what we should be teaching. I'm doing a really, an overview of this, of what it gauge is, I don't want to get down into, okay? So there's 35 days, and there's six questions, so that's proportionally so on. So, I did a review of similar districts. And when I say similar districts, there's districts that have similar size, and, but also were high-performing. So they're in that four to five thousand, four to five thousand student range, and they performed well. When we looked at that, only two of the seven used the same curriculum. They had all heard of Engage and looked at that curriculum, said, yeah, we're going to go this route, or we're going to go a different way. They decided that, they said very clearly that our key was aligning this with our state standards. They said, no matter what the curriculum is, we're relooking at this and so on, but it always has to be aligned. Multiple resources are available, staff, students, and parents. That's later in this presentation. I will say that we could do a better job of making sure that you can find that quickly, but the teachers tend, are sending that information home, many of them have it on their websites, but the information is available. Nobody used textbooks in any of the districts I surveyed. At these seven that we looked at, not one of them actually had a textbook. Some of them had workbooks, but no one had a textbook. And again, the key that I heard repeatedly with Barry's conversation was the alignment with North Carolina standards. These are some supplemental resources that we currently offer in our district that supports learning around Engage New York. Most are free, a couple we purchase at the district level, but most of this is as full access to parents from home. Even the ones that we pay for, they, there is still access that parents can go in and look. Again, we can do a better job of communicating where some of this information is, but the kids love this. Kids go home, and if they have access, they sit and play on it, and they, they love to learn. And Khan Academy, you guys all use Khan, that's a lifesaver, isn't it? You miss class, you go to Khan, don't you? So it's great stuff. So, future plans. We have new K8 standards coming out in 2018, 2019. Kristy Hodges and another math teacher are, they're going to head to a workshop next week in Plymouth, or maybe it's the 20th. And we're going to get a handle on where things need to go. We're going to revise our pacing guides, but that sample that I gave you is just a smidgen. So we're going to target people like Angela and other highly successful teachers that have really put that time in and understand how this works. And we're going to line up our curriculum and create good pacing guides, and then support our teachers moving forward. And so we're going to have a strategic plan to support staff as we move forward. But I feel comfortable in saying that the Engage curriculum is our anchor text. It's your anchor, it's the book that isn't a book, but it's your guide all the way through. And Angela, I'm going to ask you, about how much did you keep of it, or about 70%?
Yes, it changes depending on the grade level. The fifth grade, it was about 75%.
And then, when I was looking over the pacing guides, it ran about, we kept about 75% of that as your base. The key is not following it lockstep, but taking the time to align your teaching with what we should be teaching.
And Angela, I've talked to you about this before, and I think that you and I both talked about the fact that your scores went up significantly. But you realize that had the kids that you had in fifth grade had Engage New York for second grade and third grade and fourth grade, you would have seen...
Significant.
Significant.
That's exactly, the first year I piloted it, there was nothing, there was no foundational work. So I jumped from 50% the year before to 73, 75%. And then, with some foundational support, last year I was at like 90%. So from, just in a two-year span, I went from 50 to 90%. So, it's a good, it's a good program.
Yeah, I've seen you, you've got to send it to you.
The way it's taught is different, and it makes us uncomfortable. As a parent, when my child came home, you think I could pick up a second-grade work, some homework, and just roll with it. I was struggling. But when he walked me through it and I saw it work, I also wasn't aware that I could go here to see how that lesson was taught. Our teachers also send a sample, and Princes, you can just jump in here. They send sample work home, so it, they, the work doesn't go home blind, where you say, here's a worksheet, good luck. They send home one of the samples, and then that's kind of your base that you work from. Much like you would in a textbook, where you open up that textbook, and you look, you're like, okay, maybe this, this won't look right, can, does this align, and so on and so forth.
I talked to a couple of teachers, a primary and an intermediate, and the intermediate said that one part that she really liked was that it teaches things conceptually, which is the way the standards are. And they, they loved it. I, you know, they said their kids were successful. I asked about the parents not having support to help their children. Now, they talked about like online videos that were available for parents to...
And Engage has all of that on that website. Again, we could do a better job on making sure that that information goes home, and parents have access... Again, we couldn't do a better job on making sure that that information goes home and parents have access and can find that quickly. Cause your comfort zone goes up. When the kids are older, when these guys, they go find it. They're, they're, they're right on it, they're not messing around. They missed that chemistry lesson, they're on to that. Had I known, I'd have gone to the Engage Math. Since I was in the building, I could have done it.
These were veteran teachers, they were very, they had nothing but good things to say about it.
Well, and most of the teachers require Zern. And Zern, if you're not familiar with it, is aligned with Engage New York, it's the online component where they go in and it's on their level. And it has a math talk. And so it is a robot or some type of character that walks them through, reteaching them the lesson that they've learned in the classroom. And so the parent can watch that with them and they can see what the teacher has taught in the classroom based on the lesson they are with Zern if they're at that point. If they don't pass the, so it's the math talk, so it teaches the lesson and then they have their questions at the end, their assessment piece. And that's not a graded component in our buildings, but it is a required component because it gives them that reinforcement that they've learned that skill. So that's the piece that the parents, and most, you know, most of the parents see their kids working on it. And then if the child has questions or is struggling, the parent can watch the math talk and you can watch it as many times. And if you don't pass that session, then they have to do that lesson again.
So early on, you said, other districts review of similar districts, you indicated that they've performed well. Can you be a little bit more specific as to what you're talking about performed well?
Uh, they were at, I could say about a seventy percent above passage rate across fourth and fifth grade levels. Alright, our third grade math looks real pretty strong across the district by and large right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I was asking about you review of, your review of similar district, similar districts. And I thought you were saying that they had performed well. And I was just asking.
What well was? Over seventy percent passage.
Okay. And, I'm sorry ma'am, I forgot your name, Ms. Ferris, was it?
Yes.
Okay, I, I was asking. So when you were talking about going from fifty, I think you said to ninety?
Yeah. The first year I taught fifth grade, I did not use Engage New York. We didn't really have like a systematic thing to use. So the second year, I piloted it and I jumped, I had a fifty percent, I just pulled them so I could look, make sure I'm correct. But I start, I had a fifty percent the first year, the second year. Fifty percent passage rate.
Okay.
And then the second year was about seventy-five percent passage rate. And last year was ninety percent. And in that ninety percent, college-ready students, fours and fives, I had nineteen out of twenty-one that were fours and fives. So they weren't just passing, they were like ready for college. So it was very, very successful as far as, you know, the data that I have.
And that was after those students had had it in fourth grade.
Exactly.
Did she just say college-ready and fifth grade?
It should be career, college-ready. That's what the state puts out, is college and career. If you're a four or five, you're on track.
You're on the path.
College path.
That by the time you get to twelfth grade, you'll be ready.
Oh, okay.
Or tenth grade, tenth grade, sorry guys.
My, my, my other questions are revolving around the supplement resources. And you listed, it looks like eight of them here. I'm familiar with a couple of them, but not all of them. And in fact, I'm familiar with about four, so I'm familiar with half of them. You said that we paid for some of them. I'm curious as to which ones.
Brain pop, the ski player, thank you.
Okay. Uh-huh, I'm familiar with, my son, I've seen him. And so, do we have anything other than those? That the children like? Do we have any workbooks? I heard you mention some of the districts had workbooks.
We currently do not have any workbooks.
But they are getting lots of paper practice. These teachers said that, you know, they, they didn't wanna say anything negative about the program because they loved it. But they said that was one that was not really a positive, lots of copying involved. And thank goodness for volunteers, they said, to do that copying. So the kids get lots of paper practice, is that right?
Yeah, especially the first year that I used it, I was more faithful to that. Then after I got comfortable with the performance and, you know, kind of different teaching, then I, I would start using more of the instance and things like that. So once you're more comfortable.
And I think that's also gonna come about with children that have come from kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade.
So would it be safe to conclude at this point? Do you feel like that these resources are adequate and that because of these numbers that Ms. Ferris has experienced? That our math scores at these elementary school, schools will be on the rise? And that our proficiency rating when they enter the sixth grade at the two middle schools will be on the rise? Or is there any correlation between this and any of that?
Well, if you, we pulled our, the Mooyaw trend, we made it as well, and the school-wide, third, fourth, and fifth grade, it did show that. Because if you look at fourteen fifty, it went from sixty-five percent, jumped to seventy-three percent because we did have a few of piloting it. Last year it jumped to seventy-nine overall. So we're, it, it, it makes a difference.
I, I wanna. Well, yes ma'am, and I saw those scores that not, I saw the year-end at your school. But I saw some other schools that didn't necessarily see the same thing. And I'm not trying to knock it, I'm trying to understand it. Because I've seen in the past some scores that I think we need to see some big movement. That's just my opinion. So if everybody feels comfortable with this and they're gonna say, hey Will, we don't need textbooks. Hey Will, we don't need workbooks. And we don't need any of that, we got it all right here. And I, and I'm told that, hey, we don't do it like you did it back when you were in school. We do it different now and you don't understand. Never mind that we spent almost two hundred thousand dollars for JP Natt students to attend the college in Alamo and for textbooks, okay? But we don't buy textbooks for elementary school anymore and we don't buy them for the middle school. Now maybe, I'm, all we gotta, doesn't understand. But I'm just concerned because at the end of the day, if it's right and I'm wrong, then I'll be the first admitted. But fifty percent and seventy percent in my world, didn't cut it. So not saying everybody's doing that, I just wanna make sure that's where we're headed.
That's not saying we've got, that there's, the score is fifty percent or seventy percent, it's seventy percent of the children.
I'm talking about performance. I'm talking about at the end of the year, when kids move on to the next level, per school and per district, I'm concerned about that. I've been watching those numbers for many years now and I'm very concerned about it. I wanna make sure that we're not just talking about going from fifty to fifty-five percent. You know, I, I'm concerned about it. Fifty percent of performance, I'm concerned.
A hundred percent of the children.
I'm concerned at thirty-nine percent proficiency going into the middle school.
Well, the other thing to keep an eye on is the growth. The growth is a huge factor and that's something, if you start looking at the EOG data across the state, the growth is on the rise in many, many of the schools. I mean, it's, it's gonna get there, but there are other factors such as alignment. And that's, that's a, a big thing that we've been focusing on, um, by the elementary principals and Dr. Luce is. We gotta make sure it's aligned correctly because I think that's a misconception when we rolled out Engage. Some called it lockstep.
Yeah.
And didn't, didn't realize that you've gotta look at that big picture and really make sure that it's lined up correctly. And then some did. So some like Ms. Ferris looked at it and said, huh, you know, some of this isn't, we can move around. And so I think that's what we're working through and we're getting there.
Yes ma'am, and I appreciate that.
By alignment, you mean it's going to be aligned with the state curriculum?
Right.
Rather than just teaching something from beginning to end.
That's right, that's right.
But I'm also concerned that we got six elementary schools and then not all six elementary schools, even though they're using these things, are teaching the third grade, for example, the same at the two different schools. I'm concerned about that. I, I would like there to be some consistency in whatever we do, whether I agree with.
That's why they're aligning the curriculum so they can be consistent between the schools. So that they can, and they have pacing guides, you know, they need to follow the curriculum from here to here during this period of time.
I think that's a great idea. That's part of what I hadn't recognized was happening to this point. And that's part of what led me to be concerned about it. Because when I went around and talked to people, there wasn't anything that was really consistent other than we went to this website that was Engage New York and then people were pulling from it and they might teach certain parts of it and it might not teach, and they had to print everything off for the copier and pass it out.
Well, the, the other thing we realized too is Engage New York is also called Eureka Math. And Eureka Math has other print options available.
Yes ma'am.
So there are, there are workbooks that you can order. Um, we've taken the option of doing, doing the copying because we're, you know, we're still learning through the curriculum, we're still learning through it. But there are manipulative kits that you can buy and there are workbooks that you can buy. So now that we've kinda rolled it out and we've tried it and we've gotten the keys, I think that's our plan is to go to that next step.
Yes ma'am.
I have to say, as an educator for twenty years, I would give anything for a magic pill. Here, you know, take this and you're gonna see if the scores just go. I feel like we need to be a little patient and give this program time. It marries an array of strategies that I wish I would have had as a child. It shows these children many different ways to solve to get the same answers. Um, so for those learners that struggle with one way, hey, let me show you this, let's use ten friends, let's use, you know, various methods to get to a conclusion. Um, it marries strategy with hands-on, with the paper pencil practice. And I was telling Dr. Luce, I look at it as a, as a framework, like you would think about a house. We all have the same framework, but in the end, our houses will all look differently. They'll all have that same basic framework, but how we construct our houses around that framework will look a little bit different.
Yes ma'am, and, and I'll be honest with you, I wish I had a magic pill in a lot of things I've done in life. So I'm very, I can, I can appreciate that. However, I recognize that a child's educational life in reality comes and goes very quickly. I haven't been an educator, but I am a parent and I've been watching what's going on. And I have been studying these numbers and yes ma'am, this, uh, this system might not have been in place that whole time. And I'm not suggesting that it might not be a better situation than we once had. I'm just wanna make sure that if we can get these resources after we decide what the keys are, that we do it. That we don't sit around and wait a couple of years like, you know, six years comes and goes, let's have somebody's education. And then boom, now they graduated.
So this is the second year for district-wide implementation.
Yes, yes.
Now, I like what you did with, with your pacing guides and speak and saying, don't do this. And is that, has that been done for all grade levels?
Yes, actually the first year was just notes. And then at the end of the year, Ms. Harsh, who was another teacher at Charver, we met, we met and we kinda just shared our notes. And then from there, we had like third grade and fourth grade, everybody kind of came together. So that was the first year. And then the second year, last summer, I think it happened again. Yeah. And so we just find two every year and look at it, you know.
So New York Math is taught grades, is it kindergarten?
Yes, all the way up through. Some grade levels at our school are a lot more comfortable with it. So, you know, you see a little bit more fidelity with it.
We have more resistance at K two.
Yeah.
Third, third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers love it because they see the results and the kids get it. Um, K two, we're having conversations about, you know, do we need to put more manipulative split in, what, what do we need to do? So I mean, that's, that's a discussion.
I talked to a second grade teacher who loved it.
Do you feel like it's taking some of the parents out of the equation and educating or helping the education process for their youngster? Or do you feel like it's as good or better than a workbook or a book going home that a parent can actually help them with?
Say that again?
I'm concerned that they go home, they have nothing with them. The parent is thus taken out or the guardian, or whomever this child resides with. That now they're taken out of the education component.
It's all about the proper communication with the parents. As long as we're communicating with parents on the strategies that we're using in classrooms, then they can understand that we're teaching numbers and the concepts. Because the EOG doesn't just have an equation that the kids can follow in the standard algorithm, the way that you learned, the way that I learned, the way that they learned. And so it is a mind shift for parents to have to understand that piece, which is why when, if the teacher sends, and typically homework might be four questions. So there's five on that page that goes home. The first one is the one that is worked out step by step. And there are different components that the children write out how to do this. So that's the example, just like if they had the textbook, there would be one or two example problems written out. They do that on the homework together in class. So when it goes home, those other four problems are what they do to practice.
Yes ma'am.
Just like they were used one page in the textbook, they're gonna use that page that you sent home.
Right, and it's just the communication piece to make sure that parents are understanding the way, the strategies that we're using. So they know that the DISC method ultimately leads to the standard algorithm of multiple-digit subtraction. It's just having the, a numbers sense to understand why I'm borrowing from that ten and making, to break down a ten. It's, it's understanding numbers sense.
Is this now, is this how they teach college math courses now too?
Online.
I'm just curious.
Yep.
Online.
Online.
Cool.
With review practice, kids, you can speak to it, you're in your college algebra, well, it's not college algebra.
Online without a teacher.
That's right.
Online without a teacher.
My class.
Our children are not learning online without a teacher. We have a teacher and we can do practice online, correct?
Okay.
The, the alignment work that Dr. Luce is, is leading with the elementary principals and staff members locks right in with that first bullet point where there are new standards coming, they're revising the standards again.
Every five years.
All the time.
Yeah.
So we'll have to make sure that, that we take the new standards and get them in this alignment process. So when you were saying, is it gonna be years, no, it's gonna be months. Because then once we get things aligned, then we go back through Engage New York and we go like, do we have something to hit all of these standards? If we don't, that's our next, that's our next purchase, is to find something to, to address all those standards.
Every five years, they're gonna realign the standards.
Yes.
And reenorm the test, I'm assuming, right?
That's exactly right. And that's, that's what I was gonna say, I think that's the hard part in wanting to see results. We all wanna see these results increase dramatically. And then we hit something like this that says, next year, guess what? The work they've done with Engage New York, it's great, we're gonna have to go do it all over again. Yeah. Realign everything, re-figure out what the state's gonna ask these kids to do on that integrated test, integrated course test.
Because that test is gonna be re-normed.
And we cycle.
With all due respect, like I'm kinda how I like this though, when you're out in the real world, unknowns pop up all the time. You have to make adjustments and then you have to still be able to perform.
Absolutely.
So I mean, that's just how it is in the real world, you know? So one month your BPCO bill is three hundred and fifty, next month it's a hundred and twenty. You better got a bill.
And that's why I think you see these fluctuations in that. Because we adjust and then something happens and we have to adjust again and then something happens.
What do you think, Dr. Luce?
Uh, I'm excited for what are the work that's upcoming. Um, I, I think we've identified some people that are really strong in curriculum and we keep going back to answer, there's others as well. Um, and we're gonna get the right people at the table, we're gonna hammer it out and we're gonna get ahead of the curve rather than behind it and take a look at those standards. I'm just, I can't look at that pacing guide enough and that's exactly how it's supposed to be written. That's a level of expertise that you don't see. And then we need to have our, our resident experts in front of, working with our teachers and help leading that staff on a regular basis so that we build capacity from Jarvisburg to Knott's Island, from one end of the district to the other, so that we have resources in each building to go to. And we're, we're doing some small work right now around that, gearing up for next year. So we're not just waiting, we're putting things in place right now.
So basically the, the six elementary schools will be on a system that's developed and will have some consistency from whenever grade is being taught at Jarvisburg all the way through to Knott's Island.
Yes, sir.
Is that safe to say?
That, that's, that's safe to say. We've been meeting on a regular basis and that is a large focus of our discussion, whether we're being consistent around our standards or we're consistent with our messaging.
Thank you.
But, but there's one big variable in there and it's called the students. Uh, and so you might go from classroom to classroom and you won't see the exact same thing going on. You'll see a, you know, in the general same area. But if the students at one school need more work in this area than the students at this school, then you might see some differences classroom to classroom.
That's the difference between a good teacher. That's the difference between good teachers and not good teachers.
Well, that sounds like the unknown in an algebra problem back when I went to school.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right. That's that letter that pops up instead of a number.
Well, I'm excited because finally, I think we're on the right track, because when I was superintendent, we became one of the top five districts in the state of North Carolina in student achievement, and this looks like we're following the same patterns there. So I'm, I'm excited to see how this is going to pan out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing, the top-scoring school districts in the state, don't they do the same thing that he listed on, do you have similar districts?
Yes, those were, unless you checked other ones, those are the similar district that he was looking at.
So those are the top-scoring districts in the state?
Yeah, when we broke down, uh, we broke down the district, uh, grade cards, the district, seven of the ones he worked, they were the top ten grade point averages, if you will, in the state, those are the districts he was checking on.
Thank you. Next item, exam exemption and attendance. And let's see, I guess I'll turn that one back over to, to those people that asked me this.
Talk to some of their folks about this. I, I know that, um, you know, at the beginning of the year, when we said we were going to basically not have a fifteen-day roll, no, ten-day roll, we were gonna look at the grades and where they were, and, um, I know that most of the state mandated, well, all of the state mandated integrative exams, it doesn't matter, you have to take it whether you've got a ninety-nine or whatever, but it has been brought to my attention this past semester that, um, we give some exams on classes that are not state-mandated exams, and there's some students that had As, however, they missed four days, and so they had to take the exam. So that kind of was contradictory to me as far as their policy goes. You know, on one hand, we're saying, if you've got the grade, you've got the grade, it doesn't matter if you miss ten days, you got the grade. But on the other hand, we're saying if you have ninety-five and you missed four days, you're going to take the exam. If you have an eighty and you missed one day, you don't have to take the exam. So that's kind of, that was just a concern brought to me, and it has seemed a little contradictory, so I thought we could talk about it.
Did you check with the other high schools?
It's inherited, I mean, that policy's been existed since I was in high school, literally, um, the exact same, I swear to you, mom's a pack rat, she keeps everything. She's like, pull out the whole handbook from back when we were in school, and it reads the exact same way. And I think that was an incentive policy put in place back when we didn't have NC final exams and EOCs. Of course, we also had to take the standard EOCs we had back even when I was in high school, but for all teacher-made exams, there was always some incentive to get kids to stick around and be in school, and so that was what that policy was. It's still in existence in every high school from here west to Williamson. I checked all their websites, that same policy exists from Camden to Dayer to Gates to Quimmins, it's all still the same thing, right, wrong, or indifferent, it's consistent with what's kind of been in there. Personally, I think if all students have to take it, I think if all students...
It doesn't matter, okay.
Yeah, I think if all students have to take exams that are issued by the state, I mean, again, all students take exams, period, and not even have an exemption policy. The only difference I found, I went across the border just to jump to Hickory High School, seniors are the only ones allowed to be exempt from any teacher-made exams, everybody else has to take them, doesn't matter. So, I mean, it's a school policy, it's the same.
It's a school-level policy, not a school board policy.
So I think it's something that if the high schools wanna take back and have discussion amongst their staffs, and then the two high schools make sure that we're trying to be consistent, the only teacher-made exam that Nat has is Mr. Davenport's health class for all performing arts, um, health and PE classes, foreign language classes, they're the only ones that do not have a state exam. So they are the only courses that are under this policy where a student can earn an exemption.
May I speak on this?
You may.
I've had a class like this before, and if we were to change this rule, honestly, I think I can make an A on exam no matter if I was in the class twenty days or the full one-eighty. So if we took out this rule, I wouldn't come to class, honestly. So this is a good incentive.
Dude's not listening to this right now.
It almost helps me be more respectful towards my teachers because they want us to come to class and listen to the lessons they have prepared. So I don't see why we should get rid of this rule because I think it should stay.
I see what you're saying there, and I'm not, I, you know, I certainly agree with incentive for the child that maybe has a B, but what do you think, a child got an A and missed four days, and a child got a B and missed two, the A student has to take an exam, the B student doesn't? I mean, and I know you're saying that there's consistency across northeast North Carolina, are we consistent with attendance policies?
Again, I'm one of those, I, I think the original intent behind that old policy, I'll say that about myself, is that it was an incentive for all when we didn't have these types of tests. Now the state's pretty much, so you're testing and everything, and there's no choice.
I know it's just been there a long time.
Yeah.
And I, and I guess that was my point in bringing it up, maybe we should bring this up.
And I think because we have to now count exam scores as twenty percent of a student's final grade, I mean, I don't know that it's not that everybody should just test in general because it, it's being taught that way, and I think that's an accountability that, you know, all teachers have in place. I mean, I think it's good discussion for students to have, student government would be a great representation for the kids to talk about it amongst the high school staffs, both staffs to have some discussion about, is it lined up with what we're saying? Should we have it now with the, the way the accountability model has changed and changed and changed, up this policy so it now more aligns with what we're expecting with students? I think those are discussions that can be had, because it's definitely an old policy.
Yeah. So if they have a B and they don't have to take the test, can they take it and raise their score up?
They can.
Sure.
You just have to be okay with the B, that's what you do.
That's a gamble. And back when I was in high school, I would have, now I'd be like, nah.
Anything else on that? Thank you. Next item, budget amendments, Ms. Crosson, Ms. Hudson?
Yes, sir. Uh, we have the first round of budget amendments for this fiscal year and for state public school fund. It's an increase of just almost fifty-four thousand dollars. It was due to various increases and decreases to allotments. We had a charter school reduction, we received some substitute reimbursements, career technology education grant, transportation reduced due to a reduced efficiency rating, uh, test results bonus, veteran teacher bonus, and school connectivity funds. In the local current expense fund, there was no increase or decrease, but we moved, moved funds into a few different categories. Federal grant funds, we received just a little over thirty-seven thousand dollars, and the federal grants are not complete yet, we're still waiting to get final allotments from DPI. But those funds were for McKinney-Bento, student support and academic enrichment grant, preschool targeted assistance, and special needs targeted assistance.
McKinney-Bento, that's for the homeless, right?
Yes, yes. Capital outlay, we received a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. That was for the school bus entry that we post each year. DPI, we, they send us the money and we post a payment, it's actually a booking entry, we don't actually receive funds, and lottery funds that were approved late. And then other local fund, that AMMA is almost eighteen thousand dollars, and it was due to CTE program support, Medicaid fees that we received, Chromebook insurance fees that we received, and the Knights of Columbus donation that we received. Any questions?
Did you mention something about a negative for transportation?
Yes.
One type, can you elaborate on that one?
Um, the efficiency rating from transportation went from ninety-five point two for last year to ninety-one point four-five for this year, which means that we received ninety-one percent of what we could have received if we were at a hundred percent efficiency.
Now, I know at the beginning of the year, we had some chats about bus routes, and we were trying to really do good with our efficiency. That was the reason we made some, oh, I say we, some decisions were made.
Well, the majority of the drop in efficiency was due to us giving the bus driver salary increases, right?
As part of it, and this efficiency rating actually goes back to, is correct, to the fifteen, sixteen years, year.
So, I see.
They take last year's numbers and this year's one-week ridership and calculate those all together. So they take last year's numbers and then they tell us one week out of the year to clock our ridership morning and afternoon, and they take that number and that number from last year, and that gets us this year's efficiency.
So, next year's efficiency rating will be based on this year, pretty much?
This year and the one week of ridership for next year.
Would be based on last year's, right?
Yes.
Yeah, an inefficient model.
But I, I anticipate it would improve next year on efficiency rating.
But from the state, I think that's one of the most ludicrous things, that you give the bus drivers a pay increase, you know, your efficiency goes down, that makes no sense.
Yeah.
You know, it's hard enough to find bus drivers anyway.
With that one target week that they check, it's a bad week for us. That, that's it right there, that's a big difference.
If you have, if you have a lot, have a lot of field trips that week, or a lot of athletic events that week, and people are coming to picture students up from school because of doctor's appointments, a hundred people, I did a calculation, one hundred people extra on the bus that one week would have given us five percent, one hundred people.
Is it a set week every year?
They, they, they give us a week's notice and say, this week you will be calculating your number.
You need to call everybody and get them all to that.
That's right.
We did plan a whole size.
Well, and I'll give you an example of things that can impact efficiency rate that's totally out of our control. The sound froze.
Weather.
The ferry closed, and so we had buses driving around, they usually ride a ferry. Well, when they're sitting on the ferry empty, driving back, they're not putting any miles and using any gas on the bus, they're driving around empty, deadheading, you know, over and then coming back again.
I got behind one of them, I told you about that.
You called me, right. And so when they're doing that, you're burning up gas, and the ridership is actually zero. And so that gets averaged in over the year, and, and it can hurt your efficiency rate. Because you've got salary and gas expenses and wear and tear of the vehicle, all that happening, and those students are on the buses.
So, I, I mean, just for record, I think it's a deficiency in the situation once again, for many reasons, but how much of that difference would you estimate outside of whatever happened that week? Was based on the salary increase? Do you have any ideas?
All I know, all I know is that the state has an idea of what the average salary should be, and we, based on different factors, are over that, and that plays into their equation. We don't see the whole equation.
I got you.
Yeah.
We would need some more information about that.
Yeah, definitely.
I can't imagine that the salaries that they're making, quite honestly, um, in my wildest dreams would have a negative than that of one hundred. I mean, I believe you.
It does.
I just, I, I, you know, because I know what they were, and I know what they are, and I'm still thinking they're probably not real competitive with the CDO licenses, I'm not driving those things, and I'm concerned about that.
I hope we don't get back to the point where we were when I came to Creighton, we had eighteen-year-old high school students riding buses because they couldn't find enough bus drivers.
I heard you talking about driving through the mountains with the snow when you was an high schooler.
Or back when I was an elementary principal. And the elementary principals have their bus driver licenses, and at the end of the day, you just climb on the bus and then take them home if you didn't have a sub bus driver.
Um, I do have one question about the, I think you said, um, lottery, um, I believe it was on, uh, was it local expense?
Capital outlay.
Capital outlay, I'm sorry. Um, you said, okay, that's the one where the bus was a hundred and eighty-one thousand, and then maybe it was fourteen thousand?
The, um, lottery funds are a hundred and thirty thousand, and the bus is sixty-six thousand.
Okay.
And then the other transfers in between like the five thousands and the six thousands, in the instructional services and system-wide were just transfers. So we, we increased a net of a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
We had already previously paid for that bus, sixty-some thousand dollars, have another budget?
I knew you were gonna ask.
Well, you said we had previously paid for it, so I'm trying to figure this out.
What this is, this is payment four of four for bus eighty-two. We got that bus three or four years ago.
Okay.
And then we're making payment two of four for buses forty-three and forty-four. So added together, that's sixty-six thousand dollars. We never actually get any funds, it just shows up on the allotment sheet, and I'm required to book it, and it's something that the auditor checks every year.
Does the lottery money really show up?
It's booking entry, we do not handle those funds, those funds come to us via the county. They actually, they actually do it different here, they pay the bills, and we just post the entries.
Okay. Bills, I'm assuming that...
The invoices, that the lottery invoices.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure they weren't paying for bills that...
No. Oh, no, they have...
Those are usually the larger capital outlay needs, like roofs, killer units.
Okay.
And, and it goes through a double check, it's actually, once the county approves it, then it goes to DPI, and they have someone there that approves the projects, and then it comes back, and then it's in their, it's in the county's budget, and it's in our budget.
Yes, ma'am.
I think Mr. Crowder was making sure that there were school district requests.
I just wanted to make sure they weren't gonna go over there and repair those, uh, soft offloads and do it for that too.
No, no, they're for our buildings.
There's a lot of checking on lottery funds.
Any other questions? Budget amendments? Okay, last item, second reading and adoption of two thousand seventeen fall policy updates. Superintendent Stefano?
Yes, um, you received this, uh, pack of recommended policy updates from the North Carolina School Board Association last month. This is just, they're, they're on the agenda at this meeting and on the agenda for the regular meeting to adopt them since this will be the second reading meeting.
Any questions on any of the policies? I have a question on administering medicines to students, policy sixty-one twenty-five.
I don't know that I have this paper, I have, because it's on the, it's on your agenda? Agenda, I have it.
Just listed all of them?
I do have it.
You say sixty-one twenty-five?
Yeah, sixty-one twenty-five. Just wanna complement the change on words, a school official may deny a request to administer any medication that could be taken at home or when, in the opinion of the superintendent and the desert lead, in consultation with the school nursing personnel, the administration of medication by school personnel would pose a substantial risk of harm to the students or others. I do want one change in this policy, though, and that's under A, medication administration by school employees, and down under one A, it says parental consent. It now reads, the student's parent must make a signed written request that authorizes school personnel to administer the medication to the student. And I would like that changed to, the student's parents must provide the school with a signed written request that authorizes school personnel to administer medication.
Instead of make, more provide.
Provide, it's a little more specific, you know, you can make something and not provide. Any other questions on that?
We're voting on these tonight, I think.
Yeah, these will be in, I think they're in consent, then?
I have one question about handbooks, since that's come up a couple of times tonight, both, both with the bullying and the exams, and I know with the exams, we were just told that that's a school policy, not a board, but do you review all handbooks, Superintendent?
We will, and actually the board reviews handbooks too.
Okay, so they are approved by the board, okay.
Okay, I consider the workshop closed.